Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Douglas Planning Board Meeting for May 28, 2019. The meeting is being recorded and will be available to viewing on the Douglas Public Access Channel and on the Douglas website. You can come to order at 7:04. First thing on our agenda today is reorganization, but before we do that, I'd like to welcome our newest elected member, Jake Schulzberg, to the planning board.
It's a tough race, but...
Congratulations on your election.
Yep.
One more on the board.
Welcome.
It's always good when people volunteer to give their time to the community. Jake, you have anything you want to say to the board or any questions you have right off the bat?
Not right off the bat. We'll take it as it comes and go from there.
Very good. Welcome. All right, first thing we have to do is reorganization. You want to wait till we get Tracy here?
Yeah, I don't think that would be...
Number better.
We can skip that.
All right, we'll move on to 7:05. The lot frontage exemption plan, Jeffrey Herman, 64 Birch Street, reendorse.
Now, this plan was before... I'm not sure if Jeff's here. Hey, Jeff.
There's two things. Two for the same property, right? Two different hearings.
Yeah. This isn't a hearing. It's just endorsement. This plan we've seen before. There was only a minor snafu, and the snafu was on the last plan that was endorsed. It was for an A and R. This is not an A and R. This is a lot frontage exception plan, so this note got changed for that purpose. So basically, it's an administrative... We viewed it as an administrative issue.
Sure.
Make that edit. You guys sign it, and then he'll be off and running.
Did you bring copies?
I did.
That's one that I already signed.
Is this you? Is that you?
Me and I had it all set.
When were you here?
I don't know. I swung in one day.
You can stamp those.
Rich was going to come by and stamp them. He said, "Yes," if he could come by in the morning.
Yeah.
Is this a Brinkhouse?
Yes.
So we have to sign the Mylar.
They have to sign the Mylar in the plans.
Is this the property we're talking about?
They both happen to be the same property since he was coming in for the accessory apartment special permit. We figured we'd knock the two out at the same time.
Same address, same case.
Same address, yeah.
So that's in that bubble there somewhere, right? It's in property number five or item number five?
That's it.
It's a lot here for a lot of work with them.
So feel free to start endorsing the Mylar here, fellas.
Need a special pen? The way you sign this is the way we do the reorganization. We have a registry of deeds paper that we have to sign. The way you sign it on the registry of deeds paper is the same way you have to sign it on every plan that we endorse from now on. So make the same thing.
Same procedure I always use.
I'm not sure. Did anybody move to reendorse this?
No.
Okay.
If you use an official standard or whatever, you have to be consistent. It's not how it looks, it's what letters you use too, so.
Somebody want to make a motion to reendorse this plan?
So...
Make a motion.
Go ahead, Mike.
Make a motion to reendorse the... It's a lot planned for Jeffrey Herman, 64 Birch Street.
It's a lot budget reduction.
Yep. I'll second that.
Motion been made and seconded. Made by Mike Steve, seconded by Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion carries.
We can use our pen on this. We can move on.
Do whatever you want.
And as a habit, we always leave the top line for...
He already dates it. He's top dog.
Because he dates it. Yep. I was writing over it. I wrote down. There's plenty of lines, but take the full line number.
I thought you were up top here.
Yeah, I was putting below me.
Who's done it? I think you've done the Mylar, right?
Yep, I already did it.
There are five signatures, Mike?
Yeah, five signatures.
All right. Thanks.
I can stamp it.
No, sign it. Well, you can stamp or sign it. Either way, I can sign it. So I found a loose second floor plan, but it's also in the SEPT. So the loose one has nothing to do with the SEPT because the two kitchens are on the first floor.
She told me she only copied one sheet of the 11 by 17.
No, I'll sign it again.
So I asked her to copy that second sheet, which showed the second floor.
Right, it's already in the SEPT.
I don't know what she gave you.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just explaining what happened. I asked her. She said she only copied one sheet.
But the second floor part doesn't really have anything to do with the accessory because the two kitchens are on the first floor.
Well, I was going to ask a question about that, but...
Yeah. I mean, I see them on here. The other kitchens located outside the garage. There's a living and a bedroom, looks like it.
We can talk about it during the hearing.
All right, we've got a few minutes before the public hearing. Bill, anything you want to discuss briefly or anything you want to take out?
We could probably... I don't know if you feel like we can knock out your item, Murray?
Sure.
Okay.
Which one we doing?
This is Pine?
Pine?
I'm sorry, GBI number two.
That's not original, is it?
No, it's not. That's what I said, "two."
All right. Guaranteed buildings, 371 St., special condition number one.
So to begin with, this is the earth removal permit that's on Glen Street for GBI. Pine's the operator, so Pine's here tonight to speak to that. As part of the permit, there were a number of special conditions, which is in your packet, the special conditions from the decision. That's primarily what we're going to be discussing tonight. And so with that, I'll let Murray take it from there.
Can I just have your name and address for the record? Murray Bristol Pine Sand, Long Lackey Dam, Douglas. So special condition one deals with the construction protocol, how we're going to be removing the material from the site. So basically, mechanical means, you know, excavators, loaders, that type of operation and bulldozers to maintain grade, various sized trucks, you know, removing material. Typical, you know, general process. We'll have it staked and graded 10 feet above water tables is what the plan is, what the plan shows, which leads us to, you know, a couple other boat points down the road which we'll discuss. And then dust control, you know, basically water truck, you know, if necessary. And then I don't think that the duration of the project's going to last very long either. So we're going to try to get a moment seat on this floor as quick as possible to minimize everything.
So just to give you a little background, you might recall while this... We're talking about Glen Street.
Could I do that while I was moving here?
What, did we fuse yourself?
Yeah.
Welcome to this discussion.
Thank you.
Good timing. So when this was being permitted, I had raised some concerns about the offset to groundwater because the data that was provided was spotty at best. So we put a series of special conditions in the decision that refer to, you know, they need to provide a plan to the board for approval on exactly how they're going to determine what the high groundwater elevation is. Because our rules and rights require a 10-foot vertical offset, and the site's immediately adjacent to the public water supply. So we wanted to make sure that that 10-foot's met. And so, you know, I know Pine has put a couple of wells out there. They were not witnessed. They dug a couple of test pits the other day. I went out. They didn't have an engineer generally when I go out to observe this stuff. An engineer is on site, and I'm just observing. I'm not making determinations on those sorts of things. So I believe Wednesday, we're supposed to meet with Alan Engineering?
Yes, Lance Anderson will be out tomorrow morning.
Okay. And then I'll meet with Lance out at the site. We'll go through methodology for determining the high groundwater elevations. There's no real benchmarks in the vicinity. So I was having some agita when I was out on Friday, trying to determine the elevations with regard to the high groundwater at the site.
Okay. We need to know that.
We do. And so, you know, we talked generally during the permitting process about the methodology. So we kind of left it up to them after the permits issued. We said, "You guys tell us what you're going to do."
Yeah.
So this is intended, I think, to satisfy that.
Yeah.
I don't think it goes far enough. I think we do need a letter from an engineer saying, "We're going to put in X number of wells, or we're going to dig X number of test pits, and we're going to do them at these locations," just to solidify what the approach is and get a firm handle on where the groundwater is.
Yeah.
With regard to dust control, that's something we'll monitor. And the thing I'm looking to get out of the dust mitigation plan is more... Watering on a site like this is not practical. You've got side slopes that are probably 50 to 80 feet in height.
Yeah.
You may need to spray them similar to what they did at Sleepy Hollow.
Yeah.
Something like that as an alternate means for the side slope protection. And again, you may not have to employ this effort, but a plan to have a plan in place is probably what I'm looking for. Murray, did you want to talk on any of the other items?
Well, I thought we were just kind of going over construction protocol tonight, but, you know, if we need to, we can, certainly.
We'll spray it like a Geoparm?
Yeah.
Yeah, something like that, Andy.
Yep. That worked at Sleepy Hollow.
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah. So this is more or less just another informational need?
Well, they need to submit these plans to the board to SEPT. So the board needs to take action on these at some point.
Yeah, right.
So I don't think this goes quite far enough. I think we need an engineer... I don't know when we walked in, Andy, but...
Just now.
We'll need an engineer to establish where the groundwater is and the methodology. And then a dust control plan.
Do we know what they're doing, I mean, at the introduction of this? There was going to be a wall built and...
Yeah. One of the conditions or the items in here says that the building commissioner has determined that there needs to be a structural design and a building permit for the wall. So I believe they may come in with a minor modification on that.
Correct.
So...
So you're just looking to update us tonight on what the process is going to be moving forward, you're not looking for anything?
Yeah, I think our wish is we'll be able to start out front while we resolve this. The engineers are coming tomorrow morning to watch the water table.
Yeah.
We confident we know where it is, but...
We need to have it on record. We have to know where the... Board, any questions?
As long as that stuff's done.
The bill's going to be involved with it, so you're meeting the engineer at the public field.
Yeah, he's going to give me a call when he gets out there.
So on the item on the agenda is just the construction protocol? Is so Bill on the agenda of the planning board?
So they do.
So you, I understand you want to have the groundwater, but tonight we were... Was the real issue the construction protocol?
Just condition one?
Condition one in the special.
Special condition number one. There was that part on the agenda.
Prior to commencement of any activity, the applicant shall submit a construction protocol on the methods for excavating the material from the site while minimizing the amount of dust and debris leaving the site. The planning board shall approve the proposed construction protocol prior to the commencement of any activity on the site.
So I guess the question is, if we've satisfied that, is the groundwater bill something after Allen Associates verifies it tomorrow we could submit to you? And would you have the authorization?
Well, let's read condition two. Prior to the commencement of any activity...
It's going to four.
Yeah, I think she jumbled up the pages. It's on page eight.
Okay.
Okay, prior to the commencement of any activity, the applicant shall submit a construction protocol on the methods for monitoring and assuring that no excavation shall be made less than 10 feet above the annual high water table. The planning board shall approve the proposed construction protocol prior to the commencement of any activity on the site. The board has the right to adjust the depth of the excavation based upon the deep hole excavation.
So, and then it goes on to four.
So both of the... The point being, both of those have to do with construction protocol. So the dust control and mitigation as well as the groundwater.
Where the groundwater is.
Right.
Right, and also four has something to do with that as well, and everything.
So the response here to condition one needs to be... Beef cup? Is that what you're saying?
No, I think tonight, I don't know that we have the data necessary to make a decision at this point.
They have to attain that data, which they haven't done yet. But the question I think that's arisen is can the board grant you within limitations the ability, as the town engineer, to work with the applicant directly without the approval of the board coming back to the board?
That's what I was asking.
That's the question, of course.
Yeah, I mean, in concept, if the board agrees, and again, I think you have to follow up at a later date, but I think in concept...
Sure, but I'd like them to come back with that information. But I think in concept, the board may be...
The methodology, I have no problem with that approach. And then we formalize it for the next meeting. We can continue moving forward with the project if it seems sound. If the approach seems sound, yeah.
I'm comfortable with Bill.
One of the things Bill brought up...
Can I just say your name so we can have a...
Andy Leonard. I understand. One of the things Bill brought up in discussions, and he pointed out, one of the challenges have been, we feel like we've determined groundwater and we'll verify it tomorrow, but one of the challenges have been because of the nature of the material, it's extremely hard to excavate without falling in. So we did have Miller Engineering put in a well, but one of the things that Bill had brought up was that as we got closer, we could dig additional test pits. But we feel that the engineer will verify them tomorrow morning.
Right, and so as your elevations get closer to that 10-foot, you're going to have less chance of that falling in as you can maintain. But you need to monitor that as you go through the project continually.
Correct.
And that should be documented, and you can follow up with Bill, in my opinion. But you have to take a vote on the board here to give Bill the authorization, so.
That's what we're hoping for. Bill, you're comfortable with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
We need a motion on that, Bill?
Or an understanding?
I think an understanding. You'd make the motion after the plan gets submitted to you, and I'm okay with that.
Yeah, so we have an... I'm okay, straw kind of thing.
We are...
We're okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
Everybody on the board okay?
Yep.
Here we go.
All right. We'll go that way then.
Try it slowly. Thank you.
Thank you. Les, were you accusing yourselves of this?
No, I was just joining in the middle of the discussion and I want to interrupt the discussion.
You could have jumped right in there.
No.
We're at the... We're going to show that Les has been in his appearance and Tracy has been in appearance and Tracy didn't accuse us of something like that. Proceed.
No. Community.
Full board.
Four communities.
Thank you. Yes, Kate.
I did a...
Your sponsor's trees.
Sorry, you're in the house.
Okay.
They were all there. Some cousins, too.
Should we organize?
Tracy came in to send them play.
Yep. Because we still have time. We could do... If I do this and then... Or the community... What kind of application? They could open it. Scholarship application.
No, before.
You could do it now. Like 12. Yeah. 12, 14, on the boys and girls side. Seven and...
Follow the protocol.
Maybe six and eight, split up. One year, you know, you put it out there for boys and girls, and then...
Okay, let's do our public hearing.
Yep.
All right, ready, Board? All right. In accordance with the Town of Douglas accessory apartment zoning bylar in the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, Douglas Planning Board is holding a public hearing on the application of Jeffrey and Carol Herman, if I say that right, for an accessory apartment special permit. Proper location is 64 Birch Street, Assessors Map 133, Apostle 5, in Douglas, Mass. Public hearing is being held on Tuesday, May 28, 2019, at 7:15 PM in the community meeting room, Municipal Center, 29 Deepwater Street, Douglas, Mass. A copy of the application may be viewed in the community development department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. Ernest Knox Jr., Chairman of the Planning Board. Public hearing is now open, 7:25. Okay, we have a plan that somebody wants to present.
Well, looking at the first floor plan, I mean, I'm looking at the plans, and they're ample, good plans, which is good to see. And I'm not privy on the amount of square footage, but it looks like it's probably under that 900. And they look like they've accommodated for an accessible bathroom. They've got a kitchen with a small deck. It seems to be part of the house in its appearance, and everything seems to be in order, what I see, so.
700 square foot.
Yeah, so it's under, you know, the nine.
Did you guys re-sign that on what percentage?
We did.
Okay.
So I think it's going to pass appropriately.
And through the next six.
Yep.
Can I ask a question? Ask away. There's a million drawings here, a million plans, but I didn't have time to look at them all. My question was, is this an infrastructure or is this...
Yes.
First floor, second floor?
First floor. It's on the first floor. It's like mostly like a ranch. But it has two bedrooms upstairs on the second and a bonus room above the garage.
There's the...
Right here.
It's like the breeze line between the garage.
So... It's on an elevation, so I was wondering if it was upstairs.
It's downstairs. There's a bonus room.
I have a question. Who is the bonus?
Doesn't say who... What did the ones?
No, but it has the address. I did check. Someone.
No, on the engineering.
So the... It'll be picked up on building permit, but this needs to be one hour, well, three quarter hour rate. You've got your architect and designer, so. That's good. So steel door. I like the closing hinges.
It's a cape.
Good. That's nice, nice looking house.
All right. Bill, any comments?
No, I drafted a decision that indicates the 900 square feet because, you know, just doing some quick sketches on that, I think it's a little larger than 700, but I didn't want to constrain them to 700, so I kept everything.
That's what I figured. It's under the nine.
All right, anybody else on the board? Any comments or questions? This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to ask any questions?
Yeah, Jeff Herman, landowner, 64 Birch Street. I do want to ask the board if it's a possibility to amend the application to allow a second service meter. And the reason for my request is, one, it's obviously easier to manage consumption, production with usage with the additional meter, but with the solar net metering, it caps off at 10 KW.
10 KW, yeah.
So to have a larger system over KW to satisfy the use of the whole house.
It won't matter. So you could put an eager beaver on that, which is you can monitor it within one, use one feed, you know, and then you could sub-monitor it for the unit if you're trying to figure that out. It's not going to affect any of your net metering or any of your S-Rex.
Well, we're no longer in the S-Rex, in the smart program.
It's the new one.
I'm sorry?
It's the new one, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So over 10 KW, it changes. You go into a wholesale rate, which can be a substantial amount from 21 cents per kilo.
Are you three-phase on that street? Is that why you're going over 10 KW? Because you're allowed only 10?
No, no. I just didn't want to be limited to the 10 KW, but if I do two systems, one as a proposed ground mount that I have on my plan for the main house, and over the bonus room, we have a south-facing roof that would satisfy or could satisfy the in-law in the two separate systems below 10 KW to get the net metering rate.
Well, it allows for a rental unit. That's why we don't split utilities.
Yeah.
I understand, yeah. So we can't... I mean, you can probably ask for some sort of special permission, but I wouldn't be for separate... We've never separated utilities.
Right, it's supposed to be on one.
Yep.
But if you want to sub-monitor it because, you know, Nana's going to pay it separate or whoever, then that's between you within the house.
Yeah.
From, you know, but that's separate eager beaver, whatever they call the thing now.
Yeah.
Where does the objection that having two meters come in? Is it just because...
You've always had one meter.
It's like rentals.
Makes it a rental.
Tradition, that's what I'm asking.
It was first discussed and put forth to discourage people from renting out that second meter.
And I have the separate utilities.
And I don't know if the electric company will even allow that as two meters, because the two properties, even if you condo this in half, you have to prove that they're two different owners, the two different... Like, say you condoed it. They will... When they go and there's a fire, they have to shut off that one meter for each structure.
But that's between you and National Street.
Yeah. Well, there is a requirement for, you know, one set of utilities.
Yeah, I mean, we don't...
In our bylaw.
We want to approve the second rate, but, you know, right, yeah, you can't do it.
So if he has the permit, he's not going to be able to do it.
He wouldn't do it anyway. Right. Okay, thank you.
I would say the general consensus of the board is no.
No, not two meters.
Anything else?
That's it.
Does anybody else in the audience have any questions or comments on this project? Okay, seeing none? A motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing for Jeffrey Herman, 64 Birch Street. Second.
Seconded it.
Aaron.
Made by Tracy, seconded by Aaron. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, abstain. Motion carries. Okay, motion two approved.[1698.83]
Make a motion to grant the accessory apartment special permit application for sixty-four Birch Street.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, sustain, motion carries.
So the decision's in the to-be-signed folder, and there's an appeal period after this, so Maria will contact you when it's passed.
Okay. So it's, um, the permit application sits until the appeal period or?
Correct. You have it then stamped in by town.
This gets filed, registered, it's right. Right? It's filed, it's registered one day.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Mike, thank you.
Good luck.
It's half. It's half. The new, the new S-Rex, the smart program is not fruitful.
No.
Took a lot of money away off the table. I'm not doing, I'm not adding more because it's not, doesn't make any financial sense. No, so you got to. In fact, some of them are going out of bankruptcy. Only S-Rex two.
All right, seven thirty. A and R plan? Jan? I cannot say that last name.
Eighty-one Pine Street, Cachadorian.
Cachadorian.
Eighty-one Pine Street.
Trying to help them out.
What's the name?
Um. I'll take a guess and say. Vicious?
It's Franka vicious.
Frank vicious?
That one, that one I had trouble.
Okay, I have some reduced sized copies, but fortunately I didn't quite bring enough, so, uh.
You can draw.
And I also brought the.
Color photos?
Also brought what?
Never had that with an A and R.
Well, there's, there's some issues with site distance, so I wanted to kind of have something to look at. Do you need any more copies?
No, I think most of us have. Oh, sure. Thank you.
You have one more?
Oh, yeah. I'll get two more, so.
You might have one? All right. Okay. And just give your name and.
Okay, uh, my name is Byron Andrews, I'm with the survey and engineering, I'm representing Janet Cachadorian and we're. I could vicious, okay, thank you. Eighty-one Pine Street, um, the property is about fifteen acres, it borders on Pine Street on this side here, and also Vine Street down here. Um, the intent of this plan is to create, is to retain the bulk of the land with the existing house and create three new buildable lots on Vine Street. All of the lots would have a little over two hundred feet of frontage and a little over ninety thousand square feet of area. Um, there are a few access issues which I'll touch on right now. There's an area of steep slopes right here in the, in the right-hand corner of the right-hand lot. Also, um, in the left-hand corner of the left-hand lot. The middle lot doesn't have those issues. The, uh, this, it does, um, it's, um, there's no posted speed limit that I could see on the road, however, on Pine Street it is twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. Um, stopping site distance, I believe, to a hundred and fifty-five feet per twenty-five miles an hour. Um, the site distance, a lot of the site distances here are less than that, um, there are a couple of factors with that. Um, site distance of eighty-one feet, a hundred and seventy-eight feet for lot four, that's in the center of the lot. Uh, the middle lot has best site distance, a hundred and fourteen feet and two hundred and sixteen feet. The left-hand lot has ninety-two feet and forty feet. Now, the forty feet is, is shortest site distance, that's caused by one single tree, one large pine tree on that lot. So, um, if the access weren't in the middle of the lot on that side of the pine tree, um, then we'd probably have to do some work, um, paving down the pine tree, have to determine if it's on town land or if it's on private land. Um, the other site distance restriction is due to the slopes there. Um, if you look at the illustrations here, the last one, the, the last picture here, this area here is that ten percent slope area. So you can see it's, it's a steep slope, but it's not a very pulso, it's like six feet or something.
It's mounted?
Yeah, so we believe it could be graded out, you know, when you.
Does it come back down?
Yeah, it goes down.
Yeah. It could be burned out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It can be.
Yeah.
Yeah, just.
How, how wide is the variable road? The public?
Um.
Accepted street?
Oh, it's, it's.
It's fine, it's fine.
It's Vine Street, it's acceptable.
But how, how wide is it?
Twenty feet.
Maybe twenty feet.
Yeah, maybe.
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 It's one of the more narrow squats on the road right there. Taking down that hill and grading it out a little bit would be an asset.
Yes.
Which would help the town.
This was the portion that was been paved for a while, where they did pave the corner.
So, in this picture, I see a stone wall. Now, you did the survey, where is the actual, where does the lot actually start?
The, the lot starts at that stone wall. That stone wall is the front lawn.
So, that's all town property here.
Yep.
Which is about what? Ten feet, maybe?
They're going to be calling another ten feet.
Yeah.
They're calling another ten feet, yeah.
So you're getting that, taking permission from the town to get to them?
Well.
Let them do.
I don't know. Um, I think it's accessible, so for our scope, I think it's fine, but I would say because this is sort of narrow here, you know.
Be nice to widen it up.
Take out the whole thing, yeah.
Yeah.
But I don't think I can say any of that.
No, I know.
But.
And, and for the purpose of, you know, moving that, it could use it in the back as it is sloped down from the picture. You can tell that it slopes down.
Well, what's?
Remove on the trees would give a further lot of sight, too.
Yeah, give more sight distance. I'm sure nobody wants to.
I don't think anybody's.
You know, a eight or ten foot mound at the end of their driveway, so I'm sure.
And then when you pull your driveway permit, and that's going to trigger somebody to go out and take a look at that.
Yeah.
Anyway.
So what's the mechanism that allows an applicant to take down into the town right away at their cost to do that, to widen it, so they can get their sight lines? I mean, there's three lots here, it's not like we're doing one lot.
Yeah.
Let's work with, work with the highway department.
I know, like when I did with Vine Highway Department.
Yeah, highway department.
Oh, you work with the highway?
Yeah.
But, but the applicant would pay for that to widen, because they're the ones asking.
Well, I did my own.
Permission.
Right, right.
Try to do it.
Yeah, so the owner's burden.
Right, I would think so.
You would just need to engineer it.
Yeah.
Right.
Not that much, yeah.
You have an edge.
But also thinking the trees away from the edge of the road would be a good thing, too.
Yeah, someone could be, uh, someone could be town trees, so.
Yeah, well, all these are town trees.
Right, but whether they're town or not, the applicant would pay for that to take down.
John is the one who wishes the driveway permits now as far as excavating that much material out of, of frontage, which is town property. The effort will be for the commissioners to that.
It depends on the extent of it, really. I mean, driveway openings happen all the time, but if they're doing a significant amount of work in the right of way, we've had situations where we've had them go to the board of selectmen, the road commissioners, and ask for their permission to do that.
Okay.
Um, now, the issue really doesn't have to do with, you know, orchestrating and shaping the.
It's not, uh.
No.
Grading.
No.
For an A and R plan, okay?
Sightline is.
The reason we're talking about sightlines is because there's a regulation that says Byron has to show on that plan some sight distances that meet ASHTO. Um, if they don't meet ASHTO, which appears to be the case here, there should be a note on the plan saying that the sight distances do not meet ASHTO. That would be my preference.
Yeah, right.
I'm not suggesting that we can deny or refuse endorsement of the plan if they don't meet ASHTO, but I'm saying the plan should reflect that because it's in the regulations, whether or not they meet ASHTO. And currently, I don't think that plan does that.
There's only one tree, the forty-foot sight line, there's one tree in the way on that side, and then there's the mountains in the tree.
Yeah, there's probably other trees if we look at it, but in terms of that, that most restricted sight distance, there's one specific tree that's causing that issue.
People it would be on town property, you're not sure?
I'm not sure.
So we probably need the plan revised to reflect what Bill just stated. Or we can get the trees cut down, right?
Yeah.
Or have. Who's paying for that?
The applicant.
Applicant with commission.
That's our only issue, that's our only issue, right?
The way to change, the way to change that is they could get the tree down before they come back with the A and R, then we're good. And, you know, I think the timeline is our next meeting's on the expiration of the timeline.
Is it just that one tree? Sorry, the ninety-two?
There's a forty.
There's a forty and a ninety-two.
Yeah, it's a short one, forty.
That's a short distance.
Okay.
You know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess it's up to you. We don't have any other issues, right?
Yeah, John's.
No, I, otherwise, the plan, I mean, I want to point out again for the applicant's benefit that one of the structures does lie now within the building setback, and it may have enjoyed some kind of pre-existing non-conforming status, but that goes, that goes away as part of, part of this filing.
No, for the existing.
For the existing building, yeah.
No, it's outside of our scope, it's already there.
It's already there, it's not our issue, it's for their benefit that I'm pointing this out.
But it's not extending the non-conformity, it's still maintained in its same position, so.
Correct.
Right, so it's a moot point.
Unless you want to build, extend that into the existing non-conformity that's there.
Well, that becomes a zone issue.
I don't know why you would do that. There's so much land.
For some reason you wanted, yeah, extend that, yeah, that would be an issue.
That would be your spot that you would go.
Otherwise, good plan.
That's an issue.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, we're good. Pretty clean, cut and dry.
Okay, so two options. I'm, I'm with it. If there's a real consensus.
So you want that.
So, so we have a twenty-one day timeline, as you know, and our next meeting is on the last day we can endorse the plan, so we wouldn't need a withdrawal if, if you wanted him to put that note on the plan, or.
I think the note should be on the plan because there's going to be obviously some involvement with the commission or with the highway superintendent as far as raking down there.
Then it's his call at that point on signing the.
But it'd be good to know that on the plan.
So we just continue the hearing?
No, it's not a hearing.
I mean, not a hearing.
We're acting within our timeline.
Yeah, the timeline.
But what's, which, the biggest thing though is knowing what avenue you want to go, you know, if you can find out that.
Yeah, find out those answers.
They can take care of it all, or you have pre-approval for it, and it's, and there's a blessing in it.
I mean, I think in terms of the, the note on the ASHTO standards, that's the issue. Um, if there's a milar kind of gap, that might actually, if, if that was acceptable.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, I'm fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you're talking.
Add that right down there.
Yeah.
Say it doesn't meet the ASHTO standard.
Don't mess up.
I, I, I have a very neat hand. I, I was, when I was doing field notes, my father would always check my field notes when I get back. And he'd always say that it wasn't deep enough, so.
Fix your penmanship.
Well, that's the case. Yeah.
Well, I got a question, question. We talking about taking some of these trees down?
No, no.
That's the applicant to deal with. That's up to the applicant. And aren't these on town property?
Nothing to do with us.
John may say, I'm not signing the driveway opening permit till those trees are.
Yeah, that'd be John's.
It's not really in our scope.
Nope.
Yep, I'll turn it on.
Nothing to do with us. Okay.
I was leading up to, can, can individuals like Mike here take down trees?
He could get fined fifty dollars.
Only if I had permission from the town.
With permission, yeah.
With permission.
He's not on the Cape, okay?
With permission, yes.
Because you made a comment earlier about doing this sort of thing.
Right, I did, but I had permission. Through the town.
Do you have a tree that needs to come down, Mike?
Through the town.
Only a couple mighty of them.
I'd like to make a motion if you would let me.
Take your pick, there's some Sharpies and milar pads right there.
He needs to do, you want to do that.
I can't read up there.
I'll make a.
He'll come back.
I'll make a motion to endorse the A and R plan for eighty-one Pine Street for Janet Cachadorian.
With that note, as discussed.
With that and note, as discussed.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mike C., seconded by Tracy, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries. All right, add your note, we'll sign it when you're done. Thank you, Byron.
You're welcome, thank you.
Give him a couple, at least one is good.
Can you hand me that? Oh, you got one built?
Yeah, we have very good ones, so.
You find, there was a good one there.
I expect them all back.
What about this one? What about the Sharpie?
No.
Yeah, that would be thinner, Byron.
Touch, touching a corner somewhere.
Do you want the razor?
Some of them, some of them dry.
Thinner, you want the thinner one?
We have one.
Um, yeah, I think we've got one.
Okay, yeah, one of those.
Get the paper copies, too.
Okay.
Cool, next. All right. Takes care of the items on our agenda.
Number three.
To discuss it.
Number three? I don't know, let's see what's.
Can we do number one? Can we do number one?
Yep, let's do number one for us. Informational presentation, Grow Space New England.
Rob's been coming in for a couple of meetings now, so.
Getting used to it.
Yeah.
You should have gone when you had the chance.
You know, well, I'm doing this as a courtesy, you know, as a kind of preliminary introduction to what we're planning on doing, so. And, and largely at the fault of this gentleman. So we, we, so a little background.
Could you just give your name for the record?
Sure, Robert Wolf.
Thank you.
And Grow Space New England is our company name. So we wrote to a lot of landowners and virtually everybody in Douglas that owned seven acres of more land, and I get tons of responses back.
Didn't write to me? Go ahead.
Was that?
No, mine's.
Okay. And so we have an option on a piece of property on Route sixteen. And, and I've reviewed this a little, a couple of times, Bill. So let me give you a precursor of what we're planning on doing. And this is a preliminary, this is a very rough sketch for managers. They're going to be doing our engineering work on this. Now let me pass this around so you can actually get a closer look. If you don't mind, I'll just hand this to you and then.
Thank you.
That's why Byron has those new fancy glasses.
There's nothing in your packet for this, so just so.
Right. So I'll give you the thirty thousand elevator pitch. What we do is look for land that we can acquire and then buy the land and build greenhouses for cannabis cultivators and get them licensed. So we're not the licensees, we are really the, it's like the old BAI stuff, you know, we make it happen.
Yep.
So we can raise the capital, we can build the infrastructure, we can then lease out the greenhouses to licensed cultivators. So we've really filled a critical gap in this whole licensing process because nothing will happen until we find the site and actually build it out. So this is our preliminary design, this is a, I think it's a twelve acre site. Did you recall Bill, I forget.
I don't, I don't recall.
Um, so, and it's basically a kind of a rolling hill, we've got some wetlands in the front, where Route sixteen is, you can see right along here. Davis Street, and so we're looking at five or six, six thousand square foot greenhouses. So we find that to be the size that is optimal, particularly in an environment like this, and I'll pass this around as well. This is a design from an outfit in Maine that has this proprietary design for greenhouses that's made out of composite material. So it's very light, goes on a slab, it's a good moisture retention factors, a whole variety of technical reasons. But basically it's a six thousand square foot platform, self-contained. So it has all the utility functions in it, bathrooms, et cetera, for your black water, your canopy area where they grow, maintenance areas in the back. And that's an approximation of the size, but we find that to be the optimal design characteristic of it. So we're looking at site along Route sixteen with that placement. And this is a rough rendering of what we basically share with people that were writing, and, and I can show this around as well. This is a rendering of what the greenhouses look like in a typical setting, right? So it's surrounded by a security fence. It's compliant with all the Massachusetts laws and standards, each one is a self-contained box with security. So they, we're basically building an infrastructure that is coming in about two hundred dollars a square foot. So you're not talking about inexpensive greenhouses. These are, they're pretty high-tech. And if you look at agricultural activity out in the West Coast, for example, where they really have this nailed, these are the kind of greenhouses that are growing tomatoes in, asparagus in. So these are multiple-use greenhouses that we can grow anything in. We have, one of our partners is actually growing heirloom tomatoes out in Hadley, Mass. for Whole Foods Market.
Yep.
So there is a market down the road for what they call farm-to-fork and farm-to-table produce that these will fit as well. So we look at a futuristic opportunity here, not only is cannabis the short, you know, the introductory market because it's a high-value product. But this is also able to be used for a lot of different products. So we think this is a start of something good. Now, as a backdrop, you've probably heard with the economic. You know, the development of that whole section. So this area we see is optimal because we've got the gas line there, we're right along Route sixteen where there's going to be some development opportunity. We see this as a gateway piece of property that can be the start of something good and big up in the, as you extend further up into the property area. I didn't bring a larger map, but I know you got, you know, you know the property. And so this is a good start.
Great start.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's rolling land, so you know, one of the, one of the frustrations in Massachusetts, A, there's no, you know, it's wetlands everywhere, particularly after the past year, right? Um, and there's nothing flat, four, it doesn't have power. So you know, we have to have some really particular criteria for what we need for property. And you know, I've looked at six hundred pieces of property in the past year, and we have thirty sites around Massachusetts, and that's the ratio. So it's really, you know, it's very carefully thought out, this has power, we'll have water resources, there's on-site water, obviously we've got good water resources there. You know, we don't have the septic design designed out, we have retention ponds, these are all going to be developed by, you know, I'm working with Andrews and getting the site planned out. And we'll get your input as we go forth. But I'd like to have everything buttoned up and actually have a formal application before you guys, probably by July, so.
That's good.
All right, so.
I have one question on it. Out on five and ten, out in Hadley, I think it's Hadley or up there by Deerfield.
Yep.
Please hear?
Yes.
Alongside five and ten, there's got to be thirty of them lined up. It's a massive growing place. It's an old tobacco farm, but at night it glows blue because of all your nightlights. Are they going to be running twenty-four hour nightlights?
Yes.
Twenty-four hour growing?
But if they're blackout curtains, if they're done well, you won't see them.
Okay, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, and as a matter of fact, those, that, those greenhouses were originally for a florist center.
Right, they're all glass out there, it's huge.
Right. You're right, but they are not, they weren't built for cannabis.
No.
And so they, they're kind of like.
But they also have the lighting twenty-four seven, which I know for cannabis is still.
This has to be cycled, though, you can't.
Right, you can't have it, right.
It's cycled, the light goes off at a certain time and.
Oh, I know, but I understand.
Way off the road.
But, but, and well, that's another thing that I look at in terms of the aesthetics. You know, this is, this is going to be well hidden.
You're going to be far enough off the road?
Right, you're not going to see it, you're not going to know it's there.
Okay.
There's a, there's a, so I have a vested interest that's almost shared with you. I want to make sure that it's a quality site because I have to get paid for it. It has to run well, there's a lot of risk factors that I have to mitigate.
Yeah.
And so I like a setting like this because it's buried. It's not that it's, you know, it's not, I'm hiding it, but it's appropriate to the.
Well, you're not in a neighborhood either, I mean, this is sixteen.
That's right.
This is key number one.
Yeah.
Right, it, it fits, in many ways. But a good point.
Well, you know what I mean.
Totally, and that's why, that's why the quality of the greenhouse is critical. Because if you use something that was designed for something else, and a lot of them are using florist greenhouses that didn't have that infrastructure, so they're putting it on an aftermarket and it's never precise.
Okay. Just, just to stop questions from going down the road.
Oh, no, I totally.
You know, that's what I'm saying.
Lighting, smell, traffic patterns, you know, this is a relatively small traffic, two or three people per site. You know, it's not a lot of activities, it's not retail.
Yep.
It's a, you know, it's an appropriate use for this piece of, piece of property.
Nice.
Uh, is your proposal for, for five of the growth facilities?
Yeah, that seems to be probably, you know, I'm, I'm going to play with the, I'm.
I wasn't sure if you can get a sixth one up, up at the top.
Well, look, this is not precisely the scale.
I'm just.
And, and so I, what's holding me back for adding more? Sorry.
No, go ahead.
Oh, no, what's holding me back for adding more is the terrain.
Okay.
So you know, I, there are some sites that we're building larger greenhouses or longer because the terrain's appropriate and it fits. There's a lot of excavation here which I want to avoid. So we're using flat spots in that territory.
Got a lot of ledge there.
Right, a lot of ledge, you know, so you don't know what you're going to run into, and I'm trying to mitigate that.
Oh, but these are slabbed great, so at least that's a good thing with the ledge.
Yeah, that, or you can turn them or whatever, I don't know if you can turn some of these.
I, I, that's a good orientation, north-south, because you maximize the, the solar aspect of it. So they're, the greenhouse, the greenhouse aspect is facing south and you maximize the exposure, but yeah, you can rotate them around.
Do you have an approximate cost per to build?
Two hundred?
Yeah, it's about two, well, all-in, all-in is about two hundred dollars a square foot. So you're talking about, you know, six thousand square feet per, per pod.
One point two million?
Yeah. Yeah, we're budgeting out for about four point five million each site that we have around Massachusetts, and we have twenty sites as a target.
This is almost six million for these five buildings.
Yeah, right.
Six million bucks, wow.
Well, you know, you gotta, that's a, it's a high-value product, so.
It's better than kale.
Right, right.
Which I know. One of them puts the other one down.
Well, you know, it's, you know, I have a lot of response.
That's a ground root.
And the problem is, you know, it's either in neighborhoods or didn't have power.
Chinsing, yeah.
Or wetlands. I mean, there's tons of wetlands, you know.
Pound, right, a pound, right.
Yeah, but you're, you're up on that.
There's a little bit of a knoll here, you know, and there's wetlands as you go over here and, you know, so it's, you have some challenging property.
What are the two structures at the bottom here?
Right here?
Yeah, those buildings are those.
Yeah, those are existing property.
Which one?
I think it's one fifty-one Douglas.
Yeah, the auto, auto shop.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then the other one's another.
Yeah.
Christmas tree.
Detail, no. I was just trying to place it along Davis Street.
And this is, and this is the, this is the, the gas line. So one of the, one of the thoughts as this whole process goes forward is that there could be a cogeneration plant, working with the economic development people. There could be some really good, very good project around here. And particularly if we run the water main up and the gas line up, I mean, there's a lot of things that are going to be developed here. And I view this as kind of a, as a kind of a landing point.
Yep, a starting point.
A starting point, that, that provides access as we develop the other pieces of property, you know, acquiring the options in some of the other sites. That are tied up in land court, that are owned by ex-brige, et cetera, et cetera. So this has a starting point that we can maybe expand.
What's the life cycle of the buildings?
Thirty, forty years.
Okay, and then is this a lease, ground lease, or is this purchase?
No purchase, yeah, because we're using, we're using, we're.
Well, with thirty, forty years, yeah, you probably get that.
Well, and also it's the basis for the way we're raising our capital.
Right.
So the asset and, and the sites are worth what we're, you know, it's, it's going to be an easier fight, it's really a real estate deal, and we're basically like building a storage facility.
Right. Or, yeah.
Right.
Or a spec office building or something.
That's right, that's right.
So are you approaching this as like agricultural exemptions at all, or are you just going to go with a typical zoning?
Typical zoning.
They didn't come down on a determination.
No.
For greenhouse and cultivation of, yeah.
For this? No, it fits.
Yeah.
Right, now for the cannabis aspect, though, we're not the licensees, but it conforms with your cannabis bylaw, okay?
Right now.
So what we do is basically work with our, so our clients are the lessees that are going to take the space. So we work with them at the local level and then also work with them at the cannabis commission getting their licensing.
So you could have five lessees?
That's right.
Right, condos, basically. No, I mean condo, building condos, right.
That's right, well, we're not selling.
Not selling them, but for leasing them.
Leasing them all.
Has the state come down on determination on agricultural use for the greenhouses?
No, so that's the.
What is a greenhouse?
Yeah, but you, so under cannabis is not agricultural, so I wish you would.
The B D R S was making a determination.
Yeah, and they, and I wish they would because it would trigger.
They are going to.
Well, they're taking too long, because the sixty-one A, the sixty-one chapter is kind of an impediment for a lot of the projects we have. So we have some, you know, we have property under option that are sixty-one, we're going to have to go through the whole process. It doesn't conform, you know, can, now hemp does. And so we actually have a project in Leverett, where we have ninety-five acres, we're going to do some of these and then some acreage for hemp. So it conforms with that. Because it's a good use of the land.
Matter of speaking, this is a higher use.
Right.
Yeah.
Per square foot return is better.
Sounds good, get it done?
Yeah.
We don't want another windmill for it.
Right, no, 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 Bluebird Hill.
I, why, no.
Call it a higher use. No, it's a.
We have to tell you by, every single year.
Years ago.
And then you get sued by TransCanada, and then that's the end of the story.
Okay, so I will bring that on.
That was a big project that came in and down.
And we took a lot of time.
A long time ago, I did some wind projects in my, in one of my other careers, and you know, every, every project has. And unless you think it through and think through all the issues that you're going to run into.
Carol Pack.
You know, that's.
No, I liked the plan very much.
So I think it's well thought out in the theory.
Sounds good.
Good, thank you.
So we'll see you when you.
Yeah. You know, we have a lot of, working on the bill on the details and Andrews, I would expect you are.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
We'll be ready for you.
So thank you, great for coming in.
Thank you. Hey.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's sweet, and I'll put standing lawn on three West Street.
Yes.
As an agenda item.
Yeah.
What's up? I need a letter.
We'll see what happens. See what we do for the chiropractor.
Here, this letter?
Item number three.
Just what you want?
This is the letter from, did you? There is a plan.
It's this one, it's right there, yeah.
Don wants the drink if he gets thirsty, he just goes. This is disgusting, it's water.
Do you want to pick it up later? Do you want to wait for the milar? We can do the milar right now. Right, let's see what kind of words makes.
It's coming from the town.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
All right.
Father would be proud.
Well, of course he would.
Of course he would.
Oh, nice.
Want to try it?
Little big.
Roll the dice, Ernie, roll the dice.
If not, let me know.
Just a touch.
I need my, I need my.
So your caffeine wore off from this morning, right, wore off your coffee.
No, he needs a drink.
Any good?
Yep.
Cause this dirt used to be all gravel.
I know.
Yeah, we'll get into it.
Why don't we all just get up first?
Come over, yeah.
We just need to do one.
Yeah. Yeah, just, we're just doing the milar, we'll do the, we'll do the rest of them after the meeting.
Yeah, we can stamp the other one. Get Byron out of here.
Yeah, we don't want to see, no.
Yeah. Well, it's not like he's going to go home to watch the Browns game.
Oh, yeah.
What's going on? What's it right there?
Tank of visions?
A lot of rain, a lot of rain, but every day it rains.
We had a few there.
Yeah. Very sweaty. So it's happening.
He's all swollen.
No, no, no.
No, which is, who are you all going to say?
Very professional.
Yeah.
What you playing it? They don't actually, actually sign any. Yeah, all the signatures. Yeah, they didn't have that.
Yeah.
Yeah, the mystery requires more signature.
We'll sign the rest of them after the meeting. We usually just stand, we don't have stamps. Ernie's also right on.
Yeah, I know, a paper's gone. Yeah, the papers are.
Yeah, we'll do it.
So I green up my notes. Thirty by twenty-six.
Yeah.
Fifty by, hundred twenty-five. I think it's.
We ready, boy?
Yep.
Yeah.
Ready to go?
Billy, you want to go to three?
What's three?
I have three, I do.
Kind of.
Main street. Let's hold main street.
Sure. Keep it rolling.
We have a letter.
I'm Debbie Kinsel, from two seventy-one Main Street, chiropractor. And owner and resident. So back in two thousand and eleven, I was granted a special permit to put in a system that would help get rid of my water and channel it out into the storm system. So you guys gave me permission for that. Unfortunately, we had never done a test hole to see how deep the groundwater was.
Saturated.
Yes, it's four feet down. So the system that you guys approved wasn't going to work. So I'm coming, and it's been getting worse, and you know, every few years I hire someone to come and regrade it and gravel and all that. But ultimately, the first special permit I got, I wanted to be able to pave and get rid of that water problem. And now it's gotten so bad that, you know, I have to keep investing in these regrading and graveling and people are parking across at Unibank and, you know, Webster Five. And I just getting tired of it, so I was hoping to get a second chance. I'm working with someone from civil site engineering.
Yep.
But she said to come here first and ask you if you'd be willing to consider a second, another option before we, I spend any money or time developing a plan. But she did look at it during one of our recent, you know, rainstorms, and she said she thought she could find a solution, more than likely a retention pond. I'd have to give up a parking area, which is fine with me, because my people are parking across the street anyways. And be able to manage this. And also what happens in this, you know, wintertime, my regrading job gets pushed up to the back of the property. So I'm like, there it goes, my two thousand dollars I just invested, right? So I'd love to be able to pave it and get rid of that water problem. So just wanted to put that out there. But she said more informal discussion.
I don't either.
Hold on, hold on.
Okay, in your packet you have a copy of the plan that was permitted and approved by the board back in two thousand and eleven. Was that drainage pipe ever put in?
No, because it's, it would, it would be going twenty-four seven because the groundwater is so high. That's the reason there's a drainage problem there. I'm like the drainage system for the neighborhood. On a good day.
But, but it was going to go into a storm drain, right?
It was being.
Well, we have to put a pipe out underneath my driveway.
There, there was a storm scepter and it was being channeled out to the road and into the street.
No work is done.
And they came through a prof, process. Well, you, you, it looks like you have some paving that was done.
Well, the paving was done there because it started just to, we weren't supposed to be able to pave beyond the bar. We'll be able to fix.
Just so, just so we understand, the reason they came for a special permit was because they were creating impervious surface within the Water Resource Protectional Reliability. So the permit was required as part of that bylaw. So in order to increase the amount of impervious, they needed to do, operate that way under a special permit. Now, now, my memory serves, the neighbors participated in that hearing process and had some input in that process. So that's how we ended up with the plan that we had before us. So I was unaware that they paved, they didn't put the pipe in, they paved, so.
There was some pavement there already, so, on the, on the driveway seats that was next to the building.
The plan shows existing gravel driveway.
What was the methodology in testing for the water table? And, and what seasons was it, I mean, is there anything on record bill that you've gotten?
No.
For water testing?
From my recollection during this process, we never did any testing for groundwater or groundwater elevation because the proposed solution was installing this drainage pipe and not an infiltration system. If we did an infiltration system, yeah, we, we would have had that.
I mean, if you have the right system, oh, you could have all impervious, you know, if it drains properly.
Right, so, so the issue becomes, I mean, and again, I think, I think it would still be a special permit process. Because the neighbors weighed in on the solution. They were concerned with the amount of runoff going out to their property.
Cause if you raise the elevation and you create an hole.
So that's how we ended up with the pipe leaving the site.
But that hasn't been done, so we don't know if it works, it doesn't work.
Correct. Correct.
Right, and Margaret's gonna have to get, I mean, her business, the company's gonna have to get involved.
Go ahead.
In, in my youth, I've been back through here, through all the neighbors and stuff like that. This, I think this does sit higher than some of the budding lawns and areas and stuff like that. So, I can see why a butter's would be concerned if this was all paved with no way of offloading the drainage.
I mean, there could be clay under there, it could be like packed whatever, there's just not drainage. No matter what, it's sitting on top.
I mean.
I mean, it doesn't mean that if you go three feet down, two feet down, it might be dry for a while, right?
I think the answer here was, was to put in a drain. You know what I mean, to offload the site.
That's what they proposed, yeah.
I think there's a stream running under the building.
Yeah, but, but.
No.
Well, an informal test hole was done after the fact, and we hit water at four feet.
Right, but then, before the four feet, the drainage could go in and tie into the town.
Yeah, or like little profile Coltechs or something, so that you're infiltrating, you've got, so you're not point discharging it with that long pipe and keep it gravel. I'm sure Mark, you know what a Coltech unit is? For gravel.
I'm sure she does.
I mean.
Instead of just doing this long drain, keep all the water, if you've got it at four feet, you have four feet to work with. Or two feet to work with, with the little profiles, only one foot.
Being underground storage thing.
To keep it on the site and spread out all the water.
But you still have the ability, the pipe would help a lot, right?
Hold on, let me, let me get clarification on something.
She said she can't put the pipe in.
You're saying that you're not going to, your proposal is to not increase any additional paving than what's out there?
No.
No.
My proposal is to try to get rid of that water by doing a retention pond and being able to pave back there.
And make it go to the retention pond.
So you're going to add paving?
Yes.
And build a pond?
Retention.
Or retention pit, or whatever you wanna call it.
But that may overflow, and then you have issues with the neighbors in it.
Well, she wants to engineer it so that won't happen, cause I, well, see, I think what happened at the very beginning, Bill, the reason why this whole talk about a catch basin and a pipe, that actually came from the neighbors. That didn't come from us.
Right.
So I think that was driving the discussion, and no one even thought, oh, why don't we try something else, like what I'm trying to propose now?
But that, that could overflow, it could flood in heavy rains.
Well, I think the question here is, before revisiting this issue, and then we have to see a proposal.
Yeah, let's see what the engineer says.
To make, you know, determination.
Well, I mean, she understands that, but she says that she can design it so that doesn't happen, so that if there is an overflow, it will come back towards my parking area and not affect anybody else's property.
Or, what are you saying in your head?
Elevation wise, elevation wise, it wouldn't work.
Wouldn't work.
What's the issue?
There's a few issues here.
I mean, I'm not saying that they can't get a permit to do something like she's talking about.
Okay.
I'm looking at the photo that's here, and the pavement appears to be higher in elevation than the ponding. So how are you supposed to have the overflow go onto the paving when it's higher in elevation?
It's gravel today.
That's.
Well, is this not gravel?
Yeah, that whole area is what I want paved.
Okay.
So, like, this is where I would like, like, back here is where.
You paved this, you don't wanna put that drain in at all.
Well, no.
Cause then you cut the pavement.
Well, it's gonna cost a lot more money to put in a.
The pipe?
The pipe.
Yeah, but it could be a one, one solution. Cause within the four feet, you can run.
No.
Because.
I know, she'd have to cut the.
But the catch basin itself is, is, what did you say, Mike, it's gonna be six feet?
The storm scepter?
Yes.
Something like that.
The depth.
Yes.
It wouldn't work, I mean, you have to do something low.
It would be sitting in the water.
Correct.
It would be going all the time, it'd be going twenty-four seven, it wouldn't be able to keep up with the water.
But you're not putting gravel.
It's all loading.
It's gravel.
Why would it be going?
Okay, because it's collecting groundwater is what she's saying.
From the pavement?
No, underground.
Yeah, but that's four feet below, if the water table's there, you've got this area to collect and get it out. I don't understand why there's a.
Well, four feet's not very deep.
Four feet is pretty deep, you can get a pipe out to the street, but you're talking about cutting the.
Yeah, the location of the manhole in the street.
The original plan called for the pipe to run all the way down.
It's four or six.
Main Street, to Depot Street, it was a big.
It was big, I mean, there's no storm drain right at the end of my driveway.
It's four ten at the back.
What's four ten at the back?
So the invert out is four oh seven to breach the invert into the drain in the roadway and four oh six. So you're like, four oh seven point seven five, so you're in groundwater.
But you can pitch it at the end, and the pipe could be solid, it doesn't need to be perforated at that point, it won't be picking up any more groundwater.
Why is this perforated?
No, no, I'm saying that if you, you don't need to use any perforated pipe, you just, you have a storm drain or a basin, you collect, I don't care if you pay the whole thing.
You catch it on the top.
Catch basin, you catch it there, and you bring it within the four feet down and just hump it into the storm drain.
You're saying that you're catching, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know why we're catching groundwater.
But if you.
If it's a sealed, yeah.
I don't, I mean, I don't think.
Yeah, maybe we're not here to design this, yeah.
Yeah, we're not here to design it, and there's, there's no easy fix it, I mean, you're gonna have to come in, you're gonna have to spend the money for a plan, engineer a plan, so we can look at it and determine whether or not that plan works.
Like, it's just, I wanna know if you're open to that at all, or not.
We're open to any plan that is presented by an engineer, with a stamp on it, that this will work, and we can, we can make a determination then, but until we have a plan in front of us and know what the grades are and what the attention.
Yeah, I mean, she's gonna do a test, she wants to see what kind of materials there, is it worth working with?
Yeah, yeah.
But I just didn't wanna spend a lot of money, and she didn't wanna work on it until I got at least an informal permission.
We would, we would entertain a, a plan that would solve this solution, but it's gonna have to be.
It's a special permit.
A plan from an engineer that.
Sure.
So, you'll have to spend some money.
Oh, no, I don't mind that, I just wanna make sure if it was even feasible for me to do an item that's different.
If, if your engineer can engineer it.
Sure.
We can, we can take a look at it.
We're giving you a note.
We usually have no problem.
Most people, they keep it on your property.
We have to see all that first before we can say, okay.
No, I understand that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I'll let you know.
How, how high are you relative to the street?
How high?
Main Street, up at the top?
Tom.
Are you high above Main Street or?
Coming down.
They're pretty level, just a step up, curve, step up.
But you wouldn't, why do you ask?
Oh, no, I'm.
Catching the water and piping it back to the street.
No, we're not doing any pipes, if I have to do a pipe, I'm not doing any paving. I can't, it's not worth it, it's gonna be.
What are you gonna do with the water when you catch it in your? Well, that's, that's what they're gonna have to design.
The engineer has to design.
He doesn't know that, Mike, they're gonna have to get an engineered design.
I thought, I heard you say you were gonna try to tie into the.
No, that was the original.
That's the original. Yeah, the original plan didn't allow you to do that.
No, the, the original plan allowed her to put a pipe in first and then pave.
Yeah, right, exactly, yeah. Well, the driveway was already paved, up to the back of the house, that was already paved. If they paved over it to fix it, but it was already paved.
It was all gravel.
Paved to the barn.
Yeah, it was paved to the barn.
It was, it was all gravel. It's on the plan. It's on the plan.
There was pavement.
I remember when it was paved.
There was pavement, but there was pavement on there.
I think they paved over, but it was not.
We need a satellite image from two thousand and eleven. Zoom in.
When Ricky owned it, it was gravel.
It was gravel.
Well, let's get the engineer to pass something.
A cracked pavement.
And the assessor probably has the picture too.
Have your engineer put a plan together, we'll take a look.
There was some cracked pavement, and we were allowed to pave, repave to the barn.
Okay.
Right.
It's just we weren't supposed to pave behind the barn because it will have a problem with the ones in the.
All right, have your engineer put a plan together, we'll take a look at it.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you for coming in.
So you already did number six?
Four feet's a lot. Yeah.
Okay, so, number four?
Next item, number four. All right.
You're back again.
It's done.
Bob is the proud owner of a subdivision.
Congratulations, bro.
How many, how many, how many pounds and ounces? Blue eyes are brown.
And it's just rained for the last thirty days out of forty.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Yeah.
And I was thinking about putting in greenhouses.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe.
All right.
Sounds like it's more profitable.
Probably, plenty of things are going. It's, as I say, a higher use.
No impact to the school system.
Revised covenant?
Yes. Should be in your to be signed folder, we have a Form G and a lot release form. So with the board's direction, I would expect that you would endorse these, they've been reviewed by council. And instruct me to release them when Bob comes in with the surety check. Second that?
Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike Z. For the discussion. All those in favor? Oppose, abstain, motion carries. All right, we'll sign those at the end of the night.
Okay.
Do I need to sign that as well?
If there's a spot on the Form G, Ernie, could you check?
I did not check, no.
Signature holder.
You wanna just sign it, Mike, for a second, and we'll just get him out of here.
Section ten.
It's the same amount of time.
Is it notarized, is it notarized?
Oh, it stays with us, yeah.
Personally, appeared Robert Pace.
No, that would be notary, it has to be notarized, so. When you come in with the check, we'll go to the town.
All right.
And on my stamp.
This is you guys signing this. He doesn't sign that.
What's the other one?
You're gonna sign the covenant too, right?
The other, the other one is the Form G, yeah, he's got the lot release and then the Form G.
Okay. We need a witness, and you need a notary, that's weird.
You already have a covenant. We got the release here.
Yeah, so there's nothing.
And then, then we've got all witnesses for us.
He wants you to come in mainly for an update.
And this is the very worst thing to do.
You got one third, two thirds of the covenant, or?
Oh, really?
One half, one half.
Just a comment on this Form G, you don't really wanna separate the notary acknowledgement from the signatures.
Board approved it.
No, we're good.
Did I see this?
Probably. There was, but just, you guys should just sign that, and then, and then when he comes with his check, his signature needs to be notarized.
Can I have the exact amount of the check too?
Very good, so we're all set on that, we're all good to go.
Do you have it already?
One thirty-five.
Five fourteen.
And our plan is to post this in cash and substitute it at some point.
Sounds good.
No, we don't do whatever, so.
Well, whatever. I'll try, I'll do whatever.
Nice try.
Congratulations, yeah, good luck with everything. It'd be nice to finally see it developed.
The last three, let's see.
All right, ZBA application. Who wants it?
You're all over it.
I think that new previous.
Learn by fire? Yeah, learn by fire.
Jump in, jump in with both feet.
That's it, are we left? ZBA, oh, we have a ZBA thing? Oh, you did the ZBA? Tracy's got it.
Even better.
We have plenty of water box.
Where's your name in there?
Never, we're in there, yeah. Presenting scholarships. Me and thirty other people.
No.
Yeah, yeah, cousin somewhere.
Do you wanna look at it?
Sure.
Jake, not sure.
The boy on his first night.
Jake, what?
With fresh eyes, I'm surprised you're not passing on the torch. Oh, don't worry, we're not gonna get to that. Actually, I do like getting there.
ZBA applications come before us.
Don't worry.
We don't make, we don't vote on that. What it is, is it's going before the Zone Board of Appeals for a determination, but they send it to us as a courtesy to look it over and give our. Presentation.
Opinion.
So, it's not something that we vote on, but it's something that comes before us to discuss and see if we agree with what the applicant is trying to do. And they make a determination on it afterwards.
This is breezy, this is breezy picnic grounds, and they have an existing concession stand.
Yes.
They did some remodeling. You can see what, if you wanna read what he's requesting for relief. Existing non-conforming structure to continue the use, it's a seasonal building, and they just expanded over where there was like a deck or something. We do have, yeah, we do have a, a non-conforming alteration, extension bylaw that allows for that through ZBA.
So was the whole use there by grandfather, wasn't running a special permit or?
They're continuing the use that they have for, I don't know, fifteen years.
Right, there's no expiration date on that, from the state.
As long as they continue the same.
They test the water and everything, so that's good.
So they're not putting anything in the water.
People, thousand people, hun- ten thousand people a year, right? They're swimming.
Quite a few. Well, it's the water.
Don't they swim there?
I didn't mean the water.
No, I meant.
This is the water. The concessions.
No, but I mean, the crazy campground, people swim in that lake, right, that's what they do.
But.
Jake's good with it?
Yeah. But I mean, normally you might have two hundred people, maybe you have a couple thousand, I mean, doesn't it stress out the lake?
I don't think so, I think the water, the winds and water should.
They take care of it. Right, no, I'm just saying that that's how it's tested.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not, any other places, not open to public, the light stays green.
I got no problem with what they're doing.
I have no objection also. So Jake, if you wanna sign the little sheet, your name and for the board, unless it already says that, on behalf of the planning board.
We have no objection to, what is it, a special permit?
Uh, I don't know, is it a special permit?
Is it a special permit or is it?
It's right there.
Good question.
It doesn't say.
I don't know. Variants.
Oh, it's variants.
Variants, yes. So we have no.
Yeah, okay, so, we have no objection to the attached request for a variance, check out variance.
Yeah, it's not supposed to be.
Sign your name. That's it.
They'll cover it either way.
What is variance for?
Variance?
Then they just.
Stand for?
They're just including it a little bit, part of the.
Yeah, I think that's all I had.
That's already there.
They rebuilt, they put up new walls and it's.
They just.
Same, they just.
Are we doing any minutes?
Yeah, we got them.
Yeah, less was.
Hang them out.
So is there all of them?
Okay, meeting minutes, we have some?
Yep.
Let's go, Mike.
Um, well, Mike wasn't at one of them, so.
You can do it, and I read the minute.
He was getting his eyes fixed. Oh, I had operation, I was like, I got one permit, I couldn't drive.
All good.
It's one, it's one on.
He said he might make it.
I took it in March twelfth, which is the first one.
Okay.
I didn't find any ground, but find the main.
Oh, that's good.
All right, let's make a motion.
Make a motion, you're our man.
Motion to approve the minutes as written for March twelfth, twenty nineteen.
Second. Mike and Mike, Mike and Mike.
Seconded by Mike Z. All those in favor?
Aye.
O, abstain, motion carries. What's the next? Little link there. Anybody have anything on the, what date is that?
March twenty seventh. You read it over, Mike, what did you think?
Yeah, it's fine.
Anybody else?
It wasn't there, but it's, everything in here.
Their lawyer a little, offline.
Assume it happened.
Well, this is the one without the seconding.
Did you, did you review the meeting and?
I abstained from one.
You're good then.
Okay.
Yes, so you put the paperwork in, they put the sheet in?
Sign the sheet.
This was our right one here, Tracy.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for three twenty-six.
Second.
Yep, made by Mike Z, seconded by Tracy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries. One extension for Mike's.
Right. Do I actually resolve everything?
You resolve.
Yeah, you're the best.
You clean the agenda off.
I said a we.
We. Okay.
Four nine, got one more.
There's no I in we.
I find problems with four nine. Everybody else? No. Okay, all good. I'll move to approve the minutes for fifty, April ninth. As written.
Second.
Seconded by Mike, seconded by Mike Z. All those in favor?
Aye.
O, abstain, motion carries. Meeting minutes set down. Done. Your agenda items, private ways, Lakeside Residential subdivision regulations, solar regulations. Take them as they come.
Yeah, Bob, uh, Bob Dumas might be sending the board a letter regarding private ways coming up soon. Lakeside Residential, we did submit an application through CMR PC to get the technical assistance funding for, for that.
It's got my notes on it.
And the remaining two?
Mike's.
Not, not exciting.
What's, what's, what's Bob coming, Bob Dumas is coming in?
He's, he, I, he came in today and said he's probably gonna submit a letter to the planning board on the private ways.
So what are we doing, do we wanna have a solar bylaw to limit those zones, are we gonna?
That's the board's call, yeah.
I'm asking the board.
Are we gonna do what?
For the solar bylaw, it's on here, so congratulations.
Do we do something?
Are we gonna do something or not do something?
How are our hands tied by the state?
You mean the Dover amendment?
They are not, at all.
You have a bylaw that you can adapt in the town.
I just didn't know.
Pretty much allowable everywhere.
Use table doesn't-
Right now, it's pretty much-
Right.
Every, we designate an area, then we could limit that.
At least as a special permit, if we wanna have a second look, do it as a special permit for the planning board on the use.
Put it on the use table? That makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah.
Maybe we have the use table.
If we're not gonna have a bylaw.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Put it on the use table?
Specific regulatory bylaw.
I mean, I don't know which way's better to go. Yeah, we could-
I think the use table's common with some of the past events that they've done.
Control it, not residential, not allowed or by the special permit or whatever, so.
Yeah, that's where if it went there.
Right.
You could have a glee snary where you're-
Which way?
You know, protect neighborhoods, you don't have as much for-
Yeah, that's, that's what the board wants to do.
I would like to see something.
It's the most effective way, I think, that we can-
Yeah, go into the use table.
So that we just-
Yeah, the use table's good.
What?
No.
I, I think that's, that's fine. Um, I can talk to Jay about drafting something for your review.
Yeah.
And then as we approach the Fall Town meeting, we could put it forward.
Yeah, I mean, Oxbridge has one, Webster has one. Just review those. Those are the, I mean, Oxbridge is more, I think, like us than Webster, but both of them have, uh, solar.
Mm-hmm. Do they do the bylaw approach or do they do the?
They use table.
Use table, that's-
Yeah. Best to be conformed to your needs.
You have the point definition, you have to, you know, do a lot of that, other jazz, which is-
We're talking, we're talking about public care with that?
Yep.
Yeah.
These all have to change.
Yeah, 'cause it's wanting to change. Which is fine, right?
I mean, might as well do it with a special permit.
Yeah, 'cause, I mean, we have the time right now to do it, right?
Correct. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. To review something.
To get it ready, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Sign by law, lots of times too.
We've given us time.
Okay.
Two point oh, sign by law.
Yeah.
Subcommittee.
Subcommittee, subcommittee.
Jake's on it.
Hey, that one all good.
Oh, we need to reorganize also.
National Jaded Draft something for us, Bill?
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
We need to reorganize also.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna-
Oh, okay. I was ready towards that.
Yeah.
No, we can't adjourn.
No. You're not getting out that easy.
Alright, anything, uh, not anticipated on the agenda? Everybody, anything they wanna bring up? Oops, excuse me.
Not that I can think of right at this moment.
Okay, let's go to reorganization.
Do you wanna stay as chair, sir?
I would stay as the chair for now unless something-
I'd like to nominate Ernie Marx as chair and Tracy Shakia as vice chair.
Second. You agree with Mike Z?
Yeah.
That's quick. Okay. Alright, made by Mike Z, seconded by the other Mike.
Nobody else wants to do it?
Anybody else?
Dominations.
Want to throw any other, name it to that hat?
I mean, I, we got on that. I mean, I think it's going pretty good. We, we have a good, it works real well.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain.
Keep carrying their checks.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, now this is our registry of deeds.
Wait, what about CMRPC rep?
We've been on long enough now.
I nominate-
It went from me to last and Jake.
Schultsberg, is that his?
No, that's not, that is-
She's not gonna tell you that.
Sure, you nominated some guy, yeah, that's great. I wish Jake was in the audience, Schultsberg.
For CMRPC, um, rep.
Okay, did, do you know what the CMRPC is?
I'll give him the cluff notes.
You do have to participate. You do have to participate and go to some meetings.
The meetings are in Worcester, usually at the, the station.
Union Station, at the train station.
It's pretty nice.
If, if CMRPC is, is, uh, Central Mass Regional-
Planning Commission.
Commission. And what they do is they work with towns. We, we get grant money sometimes to do, work on zoning projects or rewriting bylaws or whatever. And some, they, they have meetings throughout the year that sometimes you have to attend them to get the information to bring back to the planning board. So that's-
You'll love it.
We, we usually stick the new guy with that.
It's a good restaurant nearby there.
It's good information.
Yeah.